...legal and the state and many other places. And this has been run by our legal council here. Mr. Crone is due. It's been run through TC Morfus and the World Law Firm, who we hired along with Studio Cascade when we were doing the land development code, Hickory by Choice 2030 about three years ago. It's been looked at and applied by the school of government. So it is something not necessarily new. Other larger cities in North Carolina have utilized. If I could go back a second, I guess one of the disadvantages is that you may not get as many bites as quickly as maybe some people would want on the property. But to me, that's not a disadvantage. It's the city property, and we're trying to protect our interest and be a steward of that property. I think we want to see the highest and best development. We don't want to see this as some other development that we have in town that may not be the best before we've upgraded some of our standards. And I think some of the, just like the quality of life issue on a community-wide basis, I think we're going to get the best development. The developers who see that we have this, they're not going to have any qualms about coming in here if they do. And maybe we don't want that type of development here on that property.
Did you answer my question? The developers throughout.
Yes, I know what CZ is. It's not maybe something that's true. If it is, I'd be a little nervous.
With regards to this, my personal opinion is that the council would be well-advised to pursue this in the nature of an economic development agreement. I think that we certainly can show whoever would come forth and whatever discussions we would have, minimum criteria based on the slides that you just showed. So I think with regards to establishing a baseline, I don't know that zoning is the right way to do it. My concern with rezoning this particularly conditional use is that through negotiations with developers, there's going to be some give and take. They're going to say, "Well, you know what? We really, you know, we would really like to do this here. Is that okay? We don't, you know, we'd like to have a granite face on this surface instead of glass." You know, there's, all these things get down into such, it's very hard to codify quality development. You've got that, and then you've got the issue frankly of the developer. This speaks to what the actual outcome would look like, but does not give us the opportunity to vet who the developer might be, what their track record is, how capitalized they are, who the tenants they are that they associate with. Whereas an economic development process would give us that chance to learn a lot more about them. So I move that we continue this public hearing, or I move that we do not open the public hearing. Excuse me. The public hearing is not open. And does it need to be, would that motion probably followed by a continuing discussion with time?
I think definitely that can be all in one motion because you are moving to do it before the public hearing. So if you move right now to continue the public hearing for an indefinite period of time until such time as staff decides to bring it back to you or y'all request that it come back, that would be a good motion.
That'd be my motion, that we continue until such time as a rezoning matter this would come before council, that we ask staff to consider what the other options are. And as a final, I jump to that, that if there's any persons here who have come to speak on this public hearing, then we hear them as a matter of courtesy, not in the capacity of a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Well, let's do the first motion, and then we'll do the others as a matter not on the agenda.
Okay. Let him speak.
As a matter not on the agenda.
Okay, can we? I'd like to make a mo, well, that motion on the floor.
Right.
Second, motion by Leo Pratt and Patton. Any discussion?
What restrictions does that put on the current developers and their interest at this time?
It doesn't put any, I mean basically, the land still sits there under the existing zoning. The folks who have expressed interest will work through some type of process to look at an economic development agreement and decide how we would move forward with people interested in developing that.
So that doesn't stop the process that we're currently having necessarily?
Well, I think in some regards it does. I mean, we haven't completely done this in a vacuum. Developers have expressed interest over the last so long since we told them we were going through this process, that CZ is a public document, they've looked at it. So they kind of, as Councilman L, so they kind of already know what's going to be the baseline based on what's presented tonight. If their expectation was that they could buy the property and meet that rezoning, then yeah, I mean, they're not going to get that. So there's the potential, someone thinking that once it was rezoned, you were going to go through the upsetment process and that was the end of it.
Could someone come in and throw eight hundred fifty thousand dollars on the table and say, "We'll go through the old zone"?
Yeah. No, you could just simply reject it, so you're not going to maintain your offer.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Move to hear a matter not on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Out of court.
Out of court.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
That matter is to hear from any citizens that had come to speak out of court against the public hearing.
We're not going to recite the rules, except we ask that people hold, try to keep your comments under three minutes. But we want to hear, we want to hear what you have to say that is relevant, pertinent, and key to the project.
I don't want to speak. I think that people might lose sight of this project as far as knowing that this is associated with that Clumager Mill Park that back in the late 1970s, I believe, was when it was first initiated, that they were going to look at possibly developing this. And, you know, in going through the whole Hickory by Choice 2030 process, you had a lot of nodes that were put throughout the city as far as areas to be developed as part of that, that whole entire project and development. Now, I think people compartmentalize all this, and they lose sight of the fact that these nodes are out there and this is one of the nodes, I believe. Is it not? Okay. And that we want, I mean, as far as, I believe, you know, we're talking about things for the younger generations and what they would be interested in, a little passive park with people riding around bicycles and getting, having exercise opportunities and things such as that. That's exactly what the younger people are wanting. And I would like to see this moved forward sooner rather than later. And I think that sometimes we lose sight of that, and these things get put off, and it goes, you know, we're going to, there's no timetable, you know, that was put on when you were going to go forward and look at this CZ zoning. You know, and I think that it would have been, it would have be hooked you to put a time limit on this so that you could say, you know, six months down the road, let's come back and revisit this, and let's get this done sooner rather than later, especially if you have developers that are looking to develop this type of property. I think that the type of development that would go along with this should be something that should be associated with a park. You know, I don't, I understand that it's, you know, you know, this isn't a permanent thing or whatever, but like, I think that as far as, I think that we ought to revisit. And, you know, when I look at that projector right there, I would like to see those nodes laid out up there because, see, this isn't an extreme out there as far as, this is right on the edge of the city limits. And that's the type of developments that personally that I would like to see, and I've seen a lot of people that would like to see. And I know that in selling that property, it was talked about that the Sandy Pines Park would be developed with the monies once that was sold, and that would be another park that would be out in the St. Stevens area. You know, and these are, this is what, you know, that I've been talking about when I talk about, let's develop from the outside in instead of always talking about development from the inside out, and let's bring that balance, you know, into the development process. And I would also like to see when this gets done and, you know, this developer develops this project and the property is there, and the taxes are coming in based on that project. You know, I know that you can't, you know, personally dedicate it, but I would like to see some kind of mechanism put in place that the property taxes that came from that project would go back in to further development of that property or associated park properties. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? We will have another opportunity, and we will have more live data. Chapter sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consideration of Amendment to Hickory City Code of Ordinance is Chapter sixteen, Section forty-three. I'll call in Captain Reedhead of Hickory Police Department to present the added council debate.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crone. I'd like to speak very briefly to you about a recommended change in Chapter sixteen of our Hickory City ordinances, which regulate precious metal businesses in the city. Several months ago, the State of North Carolina consolidated several statutes, state laws that were over the pawnbrokers, precious metal dealers, and scrap dealers to simplify it and make it easier for business owners to understand and follow the law. Our ordinance, we have found a conflict in the ordinance where some business owners have contacted us to let us know that in Section forty-three of Chapter sixteen, there was a sentence, and it's the very last sentence of that section, which indicates that a, an article from the precious metal business may be taken off-site for safekeeping off license premises. That is an actual conflict with state law. It actually does conflict with our statute, excuse me, our ordinance in Section forty-one. The recommendation from staff would be just to eliminate this sentence, that will bring the ordinance into compliance with state law, and also make it easier for the business owners to follow and not inadvertently violate state law. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments, questions, discussion? I declare the public hearing open, and ask that if there's anyone present who would like to speak against this proposal. If there's anyone who would like to speak for this proposal. There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
Motion for a second.
Motion by Gess, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Final public hearing this evening is consideration of the proposed name change of Carolina Park, which is located at 125 First Street Northeast Hickory, to the Sally and Fox Park. At your last city council meeting, you expressed a desire to remain, to rename Carolina Park Sally and Fox Park. I will recount all of Ms. Fox's accolades as an active citizen and all the woman for twenty years representing more than five of the city. But your Hickory Public Facilities naming policy requires you to hold a public hearing and take that into consideration before making your final decision to rename Carolina Park.
Does anyone have any comments or questions about the proposal? The proposal, again, is to name, to rename Carolina Park and Sally and Fox Park with subset Abbey Arboretum. It's presently Carolina Park, Abbey Arboretum, and we were unable to determine any reason that it was called Carolina Park. It does have a nice sound to it, but we couldn't find a compelling reason. With that, I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
Time to make the first one?
Second.
Who's second? Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Mr. Gess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I like it when things go through like this. Departmental report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First department report, I'll ask the city's community development manager, Mr. David Lee and Eddie, to come to the podium and present a vacant building revitalization and demo grant agreement with Shuford Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, Mayor White, members of council, Mr. Crone. Tonight, I'm here to present a demolition grant for the property at thirteen sixty Highland Avenue Northeast. That's the former AA Shuford Building. To give you a little background on the program, it allows for grants of up to twenty thousand dollars for thirty-five percent of eligible project costs for the demolition of vacant buildings over ten thousand square feet. This is the fourth, I believe, demolition grant application that has been received since the guidelines were amended in two thousand and eleven. The property is located at thirteen six, or thirteen sixty, Highland Avenue Northeast, sorry. It's approximately one hundred and sixty thousand square feet. It's owned by Shuford Mills as a former mill building. The applicant, they're planning to spend approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to demolish the entire one hundred and sixty thousand square foot structure and also regrade the, regrade the property. The building would be eligible for a grant in the full amount of up to twenty thousand dollars. The plans at this point really are regrading the site and demolishing the building and possibly using it for parking in future or future redevelopment. As you can see, it's a relatively narrow piece of land. A significant portion of the building is actually in the railroad driveway. This is the intersection of Springs Road, basically, and Highland Avenue Northeast. Here, you've got a lot of Shuford Mills, their complex, the majority now is on this side of Fifteenth Street. You've got the Z Loop building here, and then some of the retail development along Springs Road there. Can be a little bit windy exactly where we're talking about. With that, the Business Development Committee has reviewed the proposal and recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if y'all have.
You see, Brownfield study there, was it necessary?
There has not, I believe, at this point, been a Brownfield study per se. I know there, there's a lot of asbestos on the property, and they have screened all of that, and any underground storage tanks need to be removed in accordance with regulations, except for the state.
Do you know what your timeline is?
I know that the contract in front of you would give them two hundred and seventy days to complete the demolition and regrading. I believe from talking to legislators from the company that their timeline is a little bit faster. They plan to be done before that two hundred and seventy day timeframe is off. But they just want to make sure that there's enough time in case they don't let us do whether, or other things related to asbestos removal or any other unforeseen thing related to demolition.
It's a pretty important thing to do that asbestos.
It very well might be. I'm not exactly sure yet. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Layle, second by Mr. Meisner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Second department report, I'll call the city's deputy city attorney, Mr. Murray DeWitt, to present a resolution that would create University City Commission, strengthen the city's relationship with Lenore Ryan University. Go Bears!
Before I begin, I'd like to share with you, well, mayor and members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crone, I think we have some Lenore Ryan University staff members here, at least one person, Provost Larry Hall. I'm not sure, Vice Presidents Peter Kendall and Rachel Nichols are there?
I don't think either of them is.
Okay. We'd like, of course, welcome Provost Hall to our council meeting today. The proposed name of the group is the University City Commission, and this name was derived from discussions between City of Hickory and Lenore Ryan University staff and faculty members. It's a very exciting opportunity that we have to work with the university. Part of the resolution outlines the purposes for the commission. As Mr. Barry stated, wants to deepen the relationship between LRU and the city, the university students and the city's residents, increase the student body's presence and interaction in the community, enhance the collegiate atmosphere, it would be a college town, and of course promote school pride in the community. We have a wonderful resource and a jewel right here with us, and what better way to promote it than by working together? And finally, one of the biggest things we've heard, of course, in other presentations is that our adult population of twenty-five to forty-four-year-olds has declined. And so this is an opportunity to hopefully find ways to increase that population. What would be the roles and responsibilities of the group? One, of course, they would work to identify and assess opportunities to promote not only the city, but also LRU. Another purpose or responsibility would be to develop a multifaceted plan to accomplish its goal, the commission's goals and purposes, and to provide leadership in carrying out the objectives in the plan. And the plan may include specific projects, specific events, and other initiatives that the commission would develop and initiate. The resolution sets out the membership. It would be comprised a total of eleven members, four of whom would be appointees by you, and these would be city residents appointed on an at-large basis. Five of the members would be Lenore Ryan faculty and staff and students appointed by LRU, specifically by the president of LRU, with three members being staff or faculty members and two being students, one of whom would be the student body president or his or her designee. Then one member would be the Hickory Downtown Development Association Director, and the final member would be the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director or his or her designee. The eligibility requirements, of course, the members, we would want the members of the commission to have ties to LRU and have a passion for LRU and Hickory, to be active in Hickory organizations and businesses, and have the ability and relationships to enable the commission to achieve its specific goals and objectives and outcomes. So we're looking for special people. The resolution also outlines terms, and I meant to say not every detail from the resolution, try to put in the most important points that would set up the commission via the resolution. The term would be two years, and members would be eligible to serve two two-year terms with the exception of student members. The student members would be eligible to only serve a one-year term because students, of course, change, they graduate, et cetera. And so it gives a little bit more flexibility to Lenore Ryan University's president to appoint student members. Of course, the executive director of the DDA and the chamber representatives, they would be eligible to serve unlimited number of two-year terms because we want that representation, we want continuity there and that connection. The initial terms are set to be staggered to ensure continuity of the commission, and that's, again, outlined specifically in the resolution before you, so I won't go into detail on that. Governance and support, the commission will have the authority to draft bylaws, but those bylaws must be approved by you. And of course, it's subject to the open meetings and public records laws, just as all of your other boards and commissions are subject to those. And both the city and Lenore Ryan will each appoint staff liaisons, who will work together. The next steps, if you so choose to adopt the resolution establishing the University City Commission, then the next step would be nomination and or appointment of the members. Our process here, of course, generally, a potential member of the commission would be nominated and then voted upon. Lenore Ryan will follow their process of appointment. And of course, then to establish an initial meeting date. Once the initial meeting date is established, then the group would meet and choose a specific monthly meeting day. And are there any questions? Okay, one bottom line. All you marching band people, put on your marching band shoes.
Well, thank y'all for doing a great job. So I guess you want us to adopt this and set up a process for giving nominees?
Yes.
No, that's what you all want. Y'all told us to do this. We've never thought of it. This was y'all's idea. We like it.
Well, thank y'all for bringing our proposal directly to that. Well, I make the motion. We have talked about it. Motion by Wright, second by Meisner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I'd like to make first nomination to the, to the commission, to be Mr. Bruce Meisner, pastor of nineteen seventy.
Bruce, second.
Motion by Wright, second by Layle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Thank you.
That motion is carried. Are you willing to start?
I'd be honored.
It has a different term, doesn't it?
Your first, can we ask that his first order of business is to bring home a national championship?
Absolutely.
Is that a two-year term, Mr. Mayor? We got two-year and one-year slots.
Oh, no, no, he gets the two-year slot. How can we, I'm going to ask this committee, because I think we're going to get some interest in serving on this commission. And I'd say the best way is to get as many properly completed applications through our commission of process, and then we'll all sit down and we'll say the magic words, somehow we'll get three together out of that.
That's a good idea. I think we, you know, because I've had some interest, and I think they all should use the application of the commission that's on our website, right? And just turn them into you.
Yeah.
And then any of us, any of us can be involved in picking them, but.
Is he the liaison for the city?
No. No, he's actually, the liaison will be Ms. Fox. Patty Fox will be the staff liaison. And we've got to get some more things done. I want Miss Majer to keep. He's got another full-time job. We're giving him some help.
Mr. Meisner's way too high level.
Ms. Fox, yeah, Ms. Fox. My pay grade.
And I would like to say that when Mr. Meisner and I first spoke about the commission, our football register was one and one. We did not jump on the bandwagon. We believe that considering this mandate, we forgot to do it. Not exactly what we did. Okay, the concept plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Final item of new business this evening, or at least the department reports, is to get an overview of the concept plan of May Ave. And I'm not going to go into much more detail than that. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Andrea Surratt, Assistant City Manager, and I think Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, is going to. is gonna tag team with her on this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Combs. If you need to stand up and stretch, feel free to do that, and then have a seat, because we've got a lot of good information to share with you. And I wanna go through this concept plan with you, and then tell you that my part is the highlight part, and I'm gonna go quickly through, but then you'll probably see something that you have questions about, and then Chuck comes up, and he'll cover in more detail what you were struggling with, so we're gonna put a work together.
And you might wanna just add that we sent out an invitation to the Inspiring Spaces Committee to join us tonight, and then we have at least three members in the audience that are in that space.
Thank you, Kevin Schufert, and Donna O'Witt, and Paul Kerscher. He'll be back.
He's stretching his legs.
He is. Good. Well, so on behalf of the designers from Land Design, Chuck and I are going to give you this overview of the Inspiring Spaces Initiative, and one of the first projects coming out of this initiative is this Main Ave, and that's just sort of the title that we're calling it. And so as we mentioned at the last council meeting, Inspiring Spaces has had a significant amount of public input, from participants and stakeholder groups to people that attended neighborhood meetings, all the way through to the excitement that's been hurt tonight. And people are still interested in this project. And so what we have today for you is basically an urban pathway. Can you sort of think about what that means to you in your mind? So an urban pathway connecting LRU with the expanded downtown through a series of features that include public art, water features, amenities, pedestrian spaces, and then a pedestrian bridge that would be an iconic, iconic bridge that would be over Highway 127. And all of this could be experienced either on foot, or by bike, or in just in a number of settings. So that's the scope of this project, but this is just one phase of one project from Inspiring Spaces. Because as you remember, there are at least 50 projects in the full plan, and that full plan will be talked about in greater detail on January 28th. We have a council, a joint council steering committee meeting, and that will present more of that full plan and wrap all of that up with Land Design at the end of January. But this is a starting point tonight, to share with you that snapshot of this project, because this project was selected not only because the city owns all the property in this path, but also because it connects areas of redevelopment. And so one of our focus points for this project was economic development and having rebirth of areas, and this is an area that you'll see that is experiencing renovation and redevelopment, and is gonna continue that. So we'll move forward. First, I just want you to think about this pathway and understand its roots, because, you know, this project wouldn't fit in downtown Charlotte, and this project wouldn't fit in Wilmington. This is strictly a Hickory project, focused on what we are about, and so it's really focused on craft. It goes back to the brand, it goes back to what our roots are for this area. And so what is craft? Well, it's where function meets aesthetic expression. So I want you just to think about, so not only is something functional, it gets you from point A to point B, but it also has some wonderful beauty about it, or some great experience about it along the way. And all of these themes are themes that came up, not only in the brand, but they were translated into Inspiring Spaces. So we're celebrating a number of things. We're celebrating our community, first of all, our craft history, we're celebrating the makers, the people that make things in this community, and the things that they make are not just some average product, they are amazing works of art in all of the different facets, if you think about all of our divisional makers. And then they, we are celebrating just the things that are made in Hickory themselves, and the materials that they're made from. And so all of these themes are wrapped up in this main, in this Main Ave urban pathway. So there are nine elements that I'll talk, I'll talk with you about, that as you are on this pathway, in one form or another, that this pathway then celebrates those elements along the way. The wood, the metal, the clay, and all of those listed above are things that you would experience along this pathway. And so we have to go through some imagery, because you really need to think about the future and what projects could be, but along that pathway, there's, there would be a way to celebrate metalwork. And so just, there's a number of ways that that can be done, that then create activities for children, for just some art in itself, and then also the next step would be wood. And so looking at, at the wood that's along the pathway, maybe there's a public art, maybe there's a bridge, maybe there's a number of sculptures. Clay, the potter's clay. So again, some of the places along this pathway might have rooms, if you can think about spaces along the path having outdoor rooms, or areas where activity could happen, where you could, where a pottery club could host a, you know, demonstration, or the art museum could have a little outdoor class in the summer. Things like that happen along this path, and spaces that are also built into the urban pathway. Glass is another part of our heritage. And fiber, thinking about, you know, even today, how fiber is not only upholstery and weaving, but it's fiber optic. So all of that is something that could be represented along this pathway and celebrate Hickory for that. And then think about some of the activities that are more festive and fun. Beer and wine are certainly ones that come to mind. Anchoring, the pathway on two ends are two craft brewers, so the experience there is uniquely Hickory as well. Same thing with food. Number of the interesting restaurants could, one, go in these renovated buildings as they turn around, or two are already there. And so the food is also something we wanna celebrate. The farmer's market is along this path, and that's another place that we wanna celebrate. Music, the last one, thank you. So music has, has its place along, along this pathway as well. So we have the Hickory Music Factory, we do the sales concert music, we have the symphony, lots of choices for music, and they can be experienced in this great area. So the connections are not only to the material, but to the makers, and then also the objects that they make. Someone likes those objects and becomes a collector, they are then, and then those things become a legacy, and that's what we have in Hickory, is really a legacy of all of this craftsmanship. And so that's the basis for why this project fits in Hickory, and not necessarily somewhere else, special for us. And so then you take the project and think about where it goes in our broader downtown. And so, so often, our perception of downtown, and you've heard this said before, is just this Union Square space here. And it might not be your perception, but it's often the perception that it's here. But we see the space, and the Land Design sees the space, and our community is seeing that space as much broader, from the Sock Block all the way down to Fourth, and down to this One Way Pairs and beyond, into Ridge View, up to 127 here, or excuse me, here, and then edging into LR and beyond. So not only downtown here, but there's a lot of activity flanking this expanded downtown, and this project then links all that together. It goes beyond our, even our expanded area of downtown. And so the imagery for downtown and the things that could happen in that space are as creative as you can be, from lighting underneath the Third Street Bridge, to thinking about a pathway that has not only landscaping but stone, and looking at water features that have artistic expression, but are yet still fun to run through, and thinking about buildings along that path, and places for people to have parades, lots of live entertainment. So the downtown redefined has a lot of those features that it can accommodate. So hopefully you found the map, which is now Main Ave. And this is a snapshot, it's sort of like a negative view of all the building footprints in this space. Where headed is, here's LR, this is the X, and so that whole redevelopment area just beyond Pollard Posery, Maritz Mill, and Lenore Ryan Boulevard. Again, the length of this phase of the trail, of this phase of the pathway, it would carry along Main Ave, through Union Square, and to Fifth Street, and this phase would stop at Fifth Street, but there are other phases, because as we know, the expanded plan shows that we should be able to travel not only from LR to downtown, but from LR all the way out to the baseball stadium, and to Gartner Park, and the spaces up there, through linkages either through sidewalks and improvements in that direction, or other possible rail opportunities. So that's the length of the plan, but we're gonna go through some details on that. These are the slides that I want to say, we're gonna come back and go over in more detail, so we're gonna hit the highlights. So this, this is the section of Main Avenue that includes the 127 Bridge, and so one of the, there will be an entry point happening over here at LR, but there's also gonna be an iconic bridge possibility here at Main Avenue. And it would be the on, I would say like what you would call an on and off ramp onto the trail, would happen on either side of IV Arboretum, using, in Carolina and Sally and Fox Park, using the space that's there now, and making sure there's sidewalks and trails that link it and wrap around so that you can access the trail, and do so without interfering with the railroad right-of-way. And so then you would travel, this is a 10 to 12-foot wide pathway, and it undulates, it moves, it has landscaping, it's not just a straight line, and then it travels further west here into the space that you know that borders the District Court and so forth. But so here are some designs, and I'm gonna show you a few conceptual designs. This is a starting point, it's just, it's just a concept, it's just a way to start the creative juices flowing for us. But the iconic bridge possibility would happen right over the 127 Bridge, and Land Design has proposed a couple of options, and we can take it from there and do our own jury or commissioned art, or however we wanna do it. But the process here is to think about a series of poles that run at differing heights, and if you can imagine that the trees in the arboretum, in the park space, that create a backdrop for these poles, it serves as sort of a nice connection point to the parks, to the park space and to the trail itself. This is another view, again, it would be potentially a pedestrian bridge, suspended between the railroad bridge and the road bridge, so there's right-of-way, there's space in between, and there would be a potential to put that there. Here's another design, just another concept, thinking about the potential for a series of circles, and they try to capture sort of the mountain view and the rolliness of this, of this area too, so that's part of the expression in this, in this design as well. And so it has to do, this is more as if the ivy or some greenery was grown up into a frame, and those frames happened at different heights, but your experience was a tunnel with greenery, and so that's another possibility. So traveling further west, let me find your orientation. So this brings you along Main Avenue, you notice this is District Court, City Hall, and so the park continues, it winds, it has a number of stopping points, where there are park benches, maybe a little water feature, and then it travels on to the intersection of Center and Main. And there's a renovation of the water feature here at City Hall. But all along here are, it's a space that's beautiful and green, that if you were to drive by today, and you often probably do, it's a very barren parking lot right now. So it would greatly improve the aesthetic character of that street, but it would not sacrifice parking. There would be quite a lot of parking then still able to be provided in a diagonal fashion along the streetway. You would basically flip-flop parking with the pathway to create this space. And then you have the existing rail corridor, and then you'd have some plantings on the south side of that as well. Again, just thinking about the water features, there's so many opportunities to have the water features be in different forms, a pool with some rocks for children to climb, a little teeny tiny shallow water space, a cascading fountain in one of, one or two of the places, just some imagery to help you visualize. And also along this pathway, we have to be considerate of the rail line, and being safe with that rail line while we're incorporating public space next to it, and beautiful. So a potential project include, this potential project includes a fence way that's see-through that has greenery and then changes, and it, you know, we don't envision it being super tall, but it would basically provide a safe, a safe sort of deterrent from people crossing the railroad, except at the designated areas. And then it would just screen some of the less attractive parts of that railroad. Here's another feature about that, that would include incorporating actual machine parts and things that could become some sort of industrial art. All right, carrying this forward, going even further west, then we cross an improved intersection at City Hall, and, you know, thinking about improved space in this parking lot across the street for potential building spot, a little park space and water feature. The trail continues down along Main Avenue, the parking is still shown, and then you end up at Second, at, uh, can't do my, 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 Second Street. All right, so at Second Street, there is a, there is a historical name for Second Street that used to be Schufert, and so just featuring a historical name and putting some additional pedestrian treatment onto the street, running north and south on the, on the east edge of downtown, then strengthens the place, and it invites you to travel just a little further north, over here into the current flagport, where there would be an outdoor room that you could sit, and maybe those classes or the library hosting summer reading could have a little entertainment time here in that space. And it's, it's more inviting than the barren space at the flagport right now. Just some more imagery about water and more improved space for seating, just thinking about how that looks. There's just one example of that. Okay, Union Square. And so with Union Square, there's a number of opportunities. You could have been here and walked up and go down along the shops, or you could stay here and travel along the path that's on the north side of the railroad, or you can travel to this park here, this small park, sacrificing just a few parking spaces that are most significantly made up by this new diagonal opportunity, and then that park space being where the fireplace is now, for the huge tavern. And then having a south side path, going on the south side of the tracks and connecting under the bridge. And so just having two choices, you don't even have to run back in your same footprint if you were a jogger and you wanted to take this path, you could go up one side and down the other. So just some more imagery about all the outdoor seating that's there, continuing along that path again, north side of the tracks and south side of the tracks, and connecting those as well. The last piece, and sort of the current destination for this phase of the project would be what would be considered a fountain park. So I take, take a look at this photo, this imagery, and it's again, the building footprints of the current buildings are engraved, that what the city owns in terms of parking space... the current buildings are engraved, but what the city owns in terms of parking space is here in green, and you can be oriented that this is Union Square Trade Alley. Then there would be a potential for another fabulous destination to come to that draws in people from the west side of town. And it strengthens that side of Union Square to the point that it makes sense to go further, go on to Fifth Street, go on to Sixth, all the way to Ninth. If you think about Piedmont Wagon and the investment that's being made there, and all of the property in that pathway, and the railroad runs right through that, that this could be repeated over and over again down through the blocks in some form or fashion. But this would be a destination where people could gather. And so the thought would be a really shallow water feature, and we showed you photos of cascading and maybe some rocks, and it would be a place that in the summer you could, it would be beautiful to just look at and safe for children supervised to play around. And then it would also include some potential for community tables, where the lawn tables that seat 20 would happen, and you could gather in that space. And there would also be this red, these red buildings are potential additional retail or commercial space that could be added and redeveloped as this whole block is reconsidered. And then parking remains here, parking remains along here and here. So, there are some more examples of the water features, and just the idea of that outside space in the summer, and then maybe it turns into a skating rink in the winter, or some activity that also draws people out. And so with that, that's my part of the overview, but I know you've found things that you saw on these plans that maybe need further explanation, so I would like to turn it over to Chuck.
Any questions? I have about 15 slides, the same slides I was going to go over, but she did such a fine job, I think I'm done. What I do want to talk about just a little bit, and I do want to run through some of the slides, this is a concept still at this stage. What you're looking at is a concept. And so, this will be designed with certain characteristics in mind, certain patterns in mind, and we'll incidentally have to hire some folks to design it, hire some folks to build it. It's something that City Street Park is going to have to put some sidewalk in place. We're trying to figure out, are we building a concept car for pickup truck, or concept car for SUV, or a Mini Cooper, or what are we doing here? And I think so the concept is, is this urban pathway. And then we know we want some characteristics for that. And that's sort of what you've seen here in this quick snapshot. And so from there, we'll start actually devil, you know, getting into the details and actually designing this component through. And working through that, you start answering some of the tough questions. Great project, a lot of economic development potential runs along with this, a lot of quality life aspects, a lot of drawl to this entity just in itself from out of town to utilize it. Anchoring, like Andrea talked about, you have Lenoraide University renovated mill buildings, Holler Building, Maritz Building down here on this end. The idea that it could grow even further all the way to West Hickory, keeping some of those same themes and characters of the materials that she talked about. From that standpoint, there's different areas along there that would have the different themes that was discussed. Each one of those themes in itself would have a design relationship to it. So there's a lot of detail that would take place associated with that. I mentioned it's a sort of a combination bikeway, pedestrian way. As you start moving into eastward, if you will, from the college, what we think, we see at this point, the pathway would probably be on the south side of the tracks along Main Avenue till you get to the 127 area, which on this picture is sort of this larger area. So, the college would have access to it, maybe crossing under the railroad track, or even the sidewalk system that's along the north side of Main Avenue right there. Main Avenue on the north side is relatively close, you might have a little more options on the south side moving east. Again, the, part of the reason is to provide that connectivity, and also to connect the users with the environment that they're walking through. And that environment is a change of, you know, celebrating those materials that we talked about, using landscaping, your walk through the woods is really not that long sometimes because you're enjoying it. Well, part of this is to enjoy this walk through the urban setting. That also helps us with downtown and parking, as we talk about that a little bit more in the future. Your walk may not feel quite as far as if you're enjoying your walk versus something. So as you migrate in, we're going to, again, show you some of the same slides. Great iconic structure here that you saw, pedestrian bridge crossing 127. Will be, again, sort of some of the detail issues, we'll be dealing with the railroad company, we'll be dealing with the Department of Transportation. Those are some of the realistic things we have to work through to get permission to do this type of structure. We own some of the properties surrounding it, which makes, takes out maybe a little bit of level of difficulty here. But this is a pretty major iconic structure that is part of the pedestrian way, but it's also part of the travel way, lets you know you've arrived in something different also Again, pedestrian way, keep in mind, this is concept, so how do you take these ideas and really gel them into a bridge structure, supports what we're talking about, has that characteristic and feel of a tree scenario, a mound scenario, a gateway scenario, something that's enjoyable both from pedestrian and traveling public. Again, just conceptual, the idea of this, just a sort of little detail, they're showing the pedestrian way in this aspect above the railroad and the Main Avenue roadway, intentionally so that you get a little better line of visibility as you're traveling, traveling up and down the highway to see that. And then as you're looking at it from the pedestrian standpoint, there's a little climb over a bridge and back down the other side. So, you're getting some use out of that from both the traveling and public and the walking public. Same with this concept, which is sort of the footy area rings, sort of, sorry, you get the feel of, yeah, we are in the foothills, there's some relief to it. You can, you sort of see this line here, this sort of reddish line, sort of rises above the railroad and car bridge to give a little, again, 3D look to that and feel to it. So those are some of the things that when you really hire somebody to design this structure, they'll keep these kind of concepts in mind, and then actually get into the detail of what that bridge is. Again, same kind of scenario, it just gives you a feel being up over top of this, and as you're walking through, a different perspective, looking up and down the highway as well as the vehicle or traffic looking at you. One, again, orientation, City Hall, Court Building, 127, Seven is here. Couple of things to point out, you'll see the pedestrian crossings all throughout these planned views, those are improved for visibility, safety, aesthetics, all the above. The meandering trail through here gives you these little rooms in these areas for some of this artwork and feel, so that, some of those are interactive, something, you know, sit on the bench, let the kids play on something for a little while. It's not a playground, but it is a little bit interactive and educational at the same standpoint. South side of the railroad tracks here, again, you can see landscaping and some improvements, so it's sort of, all is not, it's just a 10-foot wide piece of asphalt ribbon running through there. There's a lot of different components to this. One of this one is depicting really, the fountain we know out front today is changing the look and feel of that fountain to relate it even to this area and give a little updated view to the front door of City Hall, if you will. This is a 70s building, this hall is going to be a 70s building, but we sort of changed that front look and feel to it. Andrea talked about the wall, this is sort of a multi-use wall screen. It is there for safety of pedestrians, keep them out of the railroad, if you will, but to add that buffer, I think that's obviously going to be something that the railroad's going to want to see as we work with them over this concept. It also gives you a chance to change the look and feel as you travel along it, what is it, again, stone and some benches in one place, maybe a different type of stone or material in another. You want it tall enough to give you that protection, but at the same standpoint, you don't want it to be a wall that you feel like they're closed in on top of. So those are some, again, concept, but that's some of the details you really need to get into as you're designing these facilities. Again, this is just sort of a schematic of what could be one of the water features along the trailway, something that relates to our early water mill use, technical aspect of our area, the water feature in itself, you have sort of a spray wall in one angle, you can't really tell here, but this is depicting somebody, basically there's stepping stones in this pool where somebody, again, kids can be interacting with that and have a little fun in the warm weather, and be just part of the walk along the area. City Hall, this is what we know as the large parking lot across from City Hall, gives us a chance for some economic development with maybe, again, a building sort of facing Main Avenue in this redeveloped area. Andrea, like she explained, part of this is obviously going to eliminate some parking, but in the same standpoint, rework sort of the parking we know out along Main Avenue. This really pulls it maybe to on-street diagonal parking. But in the big picture, yeah, we'll probably lose some spaces, so that's part of this topic that we'll have to look at. Improved pedestrian way as an area, this could be even a component that grows to maybe even a fundraising scenario, you know, where there's bricks sold or somebody sponsors an area. So that gives us another opportunity to, you know, for example, the group we heard speak earlier tonight, that these are some avenues that, you know, can be some public participation in to some extent. Water feature, again, sort of an iconic gateway into part of downtown and the trailways of the corner. You get to what we know as Second Street here, and like Andrea said, your options, you have two, this splits towards the front of the buildings along Union Square, or along the railroad tracks on the south side, towards the Hickory Station and that area. This is what we know, I think it's on the next couple of slides, but again, this is sort of another typical water feature, a segment of the wall, a little outside, I won't say room, but an outside node where somebody can stop and spend some time, or some characteristic material from education, whereas something related to pottery or metal working. And let's see if I skipped a slide. I was thinking I had one more of Union Square, sorry, but again, the, this splits and splits, and I'll skip ahead to this one. This is sort of the west end of Union Square, again, it comes down and sort of migrates back along the tracks, or you come along the south side of the railroad tracks to what we know as the underpass, railroad underpass, and then it follows along Main Avenue on the south side, as maybe one of the first stop in Point Four Street, and then progressed on all the way out to old Piedmont Wagon Building. So, again, a lot of this gives some opportunity for some economic development to both sides of the railroad tracks there. It pulls in, extends downtown, along the tracks, if you will, and another thing it does is it sort of helps screen that railroad corridor that we noticed there, that you see quite a bit of from time to time. So, a lot of parties that we'll have to be working with in the details, and so some of this will be certain themes that carry throughout. So if more than one group designs a block of this, for example, there'll be some themes that carry, but at the same standpoint, they'll sort of have an artistic license to, here's the concept, how do you, you know, put your design touches on it and make that work within the big picture and scheme of it. It will take obviously a higher level of service once it's in place. We spend a lot of time on Union Square itself, just from our standpoint of maintenance and dealing with that on a daily basis. This kind of facility will obviously take that kind of level of detail and daily work associated with it too. So, that's sort of a sneak peek of one little piece, of one little project of the whole concept of how we improve Hickory going forward. Questions?
Thank you for all the time.
Yes, thank you. Wow, that's all I got to say.
My life completely, I saw a picture of this play.
It's a game changer.
We appreciate everything, the inspiring spaces, crew, staff, volunteers, professionals and that. And now we're going to hear Colston for a question, January 28th?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we wanted to give you kind of a sneak peek of this initial project, if you will, the entire plan, cost estimates, et cetera, will be at that January 28th meeting with the entire committee of the City Council. But don't think that's the end, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of things to do with this, and this is just the beginning. If the plan gets finished, it's going to be a dynamic plan, going to take a lot of community engagement and involvement, it's exciting. We've already got citizens who are engaged with this, some of whom came tonight, they've obviously seen some of the drawings and plans, it's going to take off.
Any matters I know you've had? General comment?
Kind of coming, I'd like to spotlight Officer Kane, his last night is tonight, he's been with us for quite some time, you know, just doing diligence and protecting us and being a baby, and I want to say thank you for being here.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Where are you going?
Sir, I'm going to Lumington, my parents, they're aging and I need to be posted.
Big love.
Thank you for all you've done.
I would just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir.
Give them a fuzzy word around that.
Quagmire.
Mike Houston said it's the worst conditions we've ever seen in a plane.
But you know, one thing about it, it looked like it improved as the day got, well, about the second half, it was dried up. It's the reflection of the water butt.
It was also a very bad.
Color is always a bad.
I'll tell you a story, I probably shouldn't have admitted this, but I had to. I'll tell you a story, I probably shouldn't admit to this, but I had seats between Mr. Meisner and...
We were wondering where you were.
And Mr. Burry. And when I saw this guy, I might go mention his name, he sits to my left, he used to be a police officer. I saw him heading up to the president's box and I thought, Hank, where are you going, buddy?
Why'd they let you in?
I know the guy guarding the gate.
Y'all were supposed to let him in.
But it was, the weather was not that bad at the president's box. 10:30 tomorrow, the main gate at Moretz Stadium, the football team is gonna be loading into the buses and taking off for northwest Alabama, a place called Florence. And as many obviously as you can need to be there. Be a fun time and these guys have been great this year and provided us a lot of entertainment and excitement and they're putting Hickory on the map.
Televised on ESPN2.
Televised on ESPN.
12 o'clock.
It's 11 o'clock here.
12 o'clock here, it's 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock. All right, thank you all for being here, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.